Good evening, attending the City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 8th. We're going to work, please rise and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item. My.
I'll start over now so you guys get to hear it twice. Okay. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item except for the, for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to the staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Madam Clerk?
First speaker will be Keith Bachelor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Keith Bachelor. I live at 1438 Cae Cecilia, and I'm a 37-year resident of San Dimas. I'm a professional artist, and I worked for over 30 years as an illustrator, working for clients in New York and Chicago and the West Coast. I also did many movie posters for Hollywood, including Walt Disney. For the past 15 years, I've been a fine artist, working for shows across the country, and in fact, I was in the San Dimas show here for about 12 years, and I served on the Board of Directors for several years. I was asked to be the mural artist for the San Dimas, for the Gold Line Bridge that crosses over Benita Avenue here in San Dimas. And I'd like to present to you my designs, what I'm going to do for the bridge. I guess I should stay here. This first panel here is to honor the Native American Tongva people that lived here for hundreds of years, and I want to have one panel for them. And the second panel is the very early town of San Dimas, in the 1890s when the train came here, when the Walker House was built. And this is the first automobile that came into San Dimas. The third panel is dedicated to the citrus industry that was very big here in San Dimas. It really put San Dimas on the map. And I'm going to put some orange and lemon great labels on this, and I think that should be really a striking image. The fourth panel is basically how the city downtown looks today, but I want to put it on there. Each panel is going to be 15 feet tall by 10 feet wide, very large, so they should really read well on the bridge. Okay? If you notice, at the top of each image, I put Mount Baldy in the background. It's really a dominant image over our city, and it's always been there. I just wanted to include that, so it's a continuity of the four murals. Also, I designed a border treatment that works well with the four murals together and gives it some unity that way. I want to leave this here with you. I have to leave, unfortunately. I can't stick around, but I want you to, I want to leave it here with Scott Wasserman and have you guys look at it if you'd like to. And if you have any questions for me, I'd love to get together with you at a later date and talk to you about the murals and all your questions, whatever. And again, I'd love to get started on it as soon as possible. So, thank you very much.
Just a question of staff. Is it possible to get these images, not tonight, but later on, and have them put on the screen where we can actually see what it is? It's a long way away for me.
Yes.
And I'd like to, you know, get them up there for people can see them, see them, and then when they have a good idea, then people can ask questions about it. And I want to thank you personally for taking the time and doing them. From what I can see, they got a lot of color, so.
When I was first approached to do this project, I was asked if I could make large prints of the four idea sketches here and post them in the hallway for people to look at them. Would you like to do something like that?
That would be, I'd like it. I think that, I think that would be good. When we had the bridge, when they first came with the train and all that kind of stuff, we had stuff out there for people to walk in and take a look at. I personally would like to see something like that, but that would be between you and the staff and whatever.
Mr. Mayor, we'll work with staff on that, and for reference, for the public, page 169 of the council agenda has some very nice, high-quality graphics of the four that are here.
But I, but I think it would be nice if we, at one point, put them up on the screen and let people take a look, a look at them. It'd be much.
I really wanted to tell some of the history of where we live, and that's what these panels are doing, too. We have a rich history in this area, and I wanted to show some of that in the murals.
Good, and I know you were very, very involved with the, with our art projects around here, and I know that Marjorie Greene speaks very, very highly of you.
Thank you.
But thank you for taking your time and the effort to put something that we're all going to be very proud of.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Anybody else like to say anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Brandon Moon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, staff. I wanted to take this opportunity to formally announce our first fundraising event for the 2026 250th birthday celebration for San Dimas. I know we're a little ahead of the game, but it's going to be a huge ordeal for the city. The Plumber Building, one month from today, September 8th, we are doing a casino night. There's going to be three blackjack tables, roulette, poker, craps. There will be beer and wine served. Food will be provided by The Corner Butcher Shop, beer by Burning Bridge Brewing, and wine provided by San Dimas Wine Shop. Tickets can be purchased in advance for $50. If you don't plan on gambling, we welcome everyone that is 21 and over, but $35 if you don't plan on gambling. That's about all I got, and I got two minutes left, so. You guys want to hear a joke? No, I'm kidding. I'm done.
You know, what's, what's, you, thank you very much, Brandon, but it was kind of strange because I was going to ask Councilmember Weber for a report on that very issue tonight at the end of the meeting, so I guess you're off the hook.
Repetition is also a thing, too.
Super. Thank you, thank you.
Next speaker, Marjorie Greene.
Good evening, City Council and everybody out there. I'm Marjorie Greene. I'm president for the San Dimas Historical Society, and I'm here to remind you that on the second Saturday of the month, which will be this weekend, the 12th, we have a walking tour of the downtown historical buildings, put on by Dave Harbin. So if you would, let us know if you're coming, or just show up at 10 o'clock. That's this Saturday. The walk starts at 10:00. We'll be open, the gift shop and the museum, from 10:00 to 1:00 in the afternoon. And because we've got a great new restaurant in there, we've been really, really busy. It's fantastic to have a good neighbor downstairs, and this is at The Walker House, 121 North San Dimas Avenue. And we are also open on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons from noon until 3:00. So if you have questions, come by. If you want to look at something, come by. The folks that are in there are cataloging and scanning and doing work, but they'll take the time to show you around. Also, we are open, along with the restaurant, on Friday and Saturday nights from 6:00 till 9:00. That's a great time. We've been so busy in there. We just love sharing the history of San Dimas with everybody around. We get people from all over the area who say they've never been in the building, they've seen it for years, and they're just happy to be there and see the building and learn the history. So please come and be a part of it. This Saturday, the 12th, at 10:00 in the morning for the walk, will be open until 1:00 in the gift shop and the museum. Thursday afternoons from noon until 3:00, and Friday and Saturday nights from 6:00 until 9:00. So you've got plenty of chances to come by and see us and also get a good meal. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Reiner Nielsen.
My name is Reiner Nielsen. I'm an architect and president of the Villa Verde Ridge Homeowners Association. I wanted to give you a few brief comments as far as my opposition to making black walnut trees a protected item in the city of San Dimas. It was nice to see, in the report, the city has a total of five black walnut trees. Congratulations on that. I'll give you a few stats on our HOA. We have about 94 acres of common area, about 4.1 million square feet, and roughly anywhere from 300 to 400 black walnuts, and they, you know, could be more than that. We don't really have an inventory, but we do have a lot of them. When we did some trimming on them, one thing we noticed, and you have this in your board packet on another issue, it's hard to see disease from the outside. When we did trimming, we found a lot of disease and infestation within limbs, and by the time you cut that away, a lot of times you end up with a very scraggly, one-sided tree that, you know, perhaps even needs to be removed. The report had one nice picture of a tree. I don't know if that was in Horseshoe Park. And the report also did not show trees that, when they're in their dormant period, which is at least half the year. And here's a picture of one. Here's a picture of another. And, you know, in half the year, we have, like I said, a couple hundred of these. One of the issues is the low-lined branches that hug the ground, and to trim those away, if you do trimming for $79, that's great. We'd love that deal. Our experience is, we end up about $300 a tree, and a lot of our trees are on slopes that are hard to get to, so they're not like, you know, a few trees in the city. So, you know, if the city would like to protect your five black walnut trees, you know, I would say more power to you. But, you know, to come onto people's personal property and then declare something protected along with all the difficulties that would have, and having us maintain the new regulations from the fire department on limbing trees up, spacing them out, and maintaining them is, you know, quite, quite a burden. So, anyway, you know, your report had a few things on there, but it missed quite a bit of items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Slouis.
I just had some more takeaways from the Metro meeting I went to a couple weeks ago, and I hadn't mentioned this, but I think it's kind of important to know. This is Mayor Bass was speaking, and she said that Metro has exhausted their COVID monies and is now facing a fiscal cliff. This is Metro. This is where we're paying all this new sales taxes to, and with the $9 billion, or $9 million, no, $9 billion budget. They're reevaluating their current budget, but they expect next year to have an operations deficit of $400 million and a billion dollars the year after, which is, on a $9 billion budget, all this money flowing, it's a tremendous amount of money. She's also reiterated her support for a fearless Metro. That's her ultimate goal. I'm adamantly opposed to that, just basically because that's the only tool we have to have, to look at ridership and to try to control people that are not using transit for transit. They're using it for housing, they're using it for drug deals, drug dens, whatever. The way to kick them off a train is if they don't have a ticket, but if they don't, if everybody's allowed on the train, it's going to be kind of tough. A Councilman, Ebner, probably has a better knowledge than I do on this, but I think that the, the money for the extension to Montclair is kind of being held up right now, because when they passed the budget, they put some, some restrictions on the money that Metro currently is not abiding by, and they'd have to go through and do, get an approved plan of some sorts before they'd have access to that money, and they said that probably won't be till next year. The next year is another budget year, and I think California and the US government might be having some really, some difficulties in, in the monies. We're running a huge deficit. It's, Metro's going to be running a deficit. I, I not, I hope they get it. I think it's very good for the city and for the, for the Gold Line, if we could get it to Montclair, and I hope it happens. And I was talking briefly to Sheri, and, you know, we have to do everything we can to make this as successful as possible, but I have, I have some doubts. They're still having trouble with the regional connector. When I wrote it, wrote down to give my speech, it was supposed to be 10-minute headwinds. It was 20 minutes. I had, it was supposed to be a one-seat ride. I actually had to physically, everybody on the train had to get out and transfer to a train on the other side, and then we had an eight-minute further delay, so I ended up, people were complaining. It's actually slower now than it was before they put the regional connector in. They're working on it, they're, you know, it's, they have hopes, but it's not there. There was three murders on the train last week on Metro light rail trains. And the other thing I thought I'd mention, too, I heard the mayor talk about, the handoff is going to be in January of 2025, but actually, we don't, the train won't be operational till six months after that, roughly. It's, there's a training, once Metro gets it, they have to run all kinds of testing and stuff, and it'll probably be June, May, June, before we get it. And I hope it's successful. I hope we could do everything we can to make it work, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pete.
John, begin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to speak about the black walnut trees and the fact that we don't need any more regulations in our HOA to maintain our community. Please don't put any extra restrictions on us and handcuffs. The current tree code is already killing us as far as trying to get anything done and keep our homeowners happy. So, any extra regulations that some people may think we need, we really don't. There is no threatening amount of, you know, dire straits for black walnuts in our city, maybe statewide, maybe everywhere else, but in our city, in our hillsides, it's probably one of the most dominant trees that you're going to find in our hillsides around here. So we don't have any issue with that kind of stuff, and I just hope that you'll, you know, if you want to put the regulations on them, then you have to take care of maintaining them then. And if you're willing to take that financial budget, then great, but please don't add any extra stuff to ours, because we can't afford it. Thank you.
Bob Olender.
Today, the Sheriff's Department, along with the San Dimas Sheriff's Department, just announced a very important meeting coming up on August 22nd. That's the senior safety meeting, but it's open to everyone. So if you're senior, know a senior, come out to this meeting between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, August 22nd. The San Dimas Senior Building, right across here from City Hall. They're going to be talking a number of important topics, primarily for seniors, but also for all of us. They'll have some guest speakers from the Fraud and Cyber Crime Unit of the, of the Sheriff's Department. They're also going to cover items like personal fraud, online scams, senior physical and financial abuse, real estate fraud, and how to report crimes, amongst other items. So whether you're a senior, whether you know a senior, or you want to gather information for yourself, or your family, or your community, come out, again, August 22nd, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Senior Building, right across from City Hall, and I'm sure it's going to be very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorian Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Doren Barnes, and I'm
I'm Doren Barnes, and I live at the corner of Second Street and Iglesia. Our living room literally looks out right onto the bandstand at Civic Center Park. So the policy that you'll be considering tonight related to Civic Center Park use is of particular interest to us. Overall, we're very supportive of that policy and glad to see that that's moving forward. I think it provides some good structure in terms of the use of the park. And we actually really like it when events come to the neighborhood. It brings even more life to the neighborhood and takes advantage of that asset. Couple of points I would offer for your consideration. One, I noted that the time period for amplified music is 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The 9:00 PM seems to be okay, but the 8:00 AM part might be a little bit early, and it might be kinder to the neighbors if that started a little bit later, maybe 9:00 AM or even 10:00 AM. To have amplified music early in the morning, I think, would create a little bit of disruption for the neighbors. Second part, which I really appreciate, is the nod to parking and having participants that are using that venue comply with parking requirements. We've seen some rather creative parking from time to time in the neighborhood, and discouraging that is a really good thing. And then the third point, and it kind of relates to the parking piece, and this probably has to be more aspirational, but the policy does talk about returning the park back to its condition in terms of being free of litter, being clean. To the extent you can aspirationally include some statement in there that users of that facility should be encouraged to also have the surrounding neighborhood be returned clean. Again, sometimes when there have been community events, the next day, there's trash that has to be picked up. The more that that can be minimized, the better. But again, we think it's a great policy, and I really hope it facilitates more use of the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those were all the speaker cards, Mayor.
Did anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time who had not turned in a card? Ma'am?
Hi there. Before we get started, could I give my packets out and one to Deborah for you guys to look at some pictures regarding the black walnut? Thank you. Sorry, couldn't get it on time due to the fact that I got the report yesterday on the agenda, and I sent out my text messages. Who I did get ahold of was Brian Chen of Heather Glenn HOA, Victor DiMancina, The Villas at Rancho Villa Verde HOA, Villa Verde Ridge HOA, as well as Villa Verde Estates HOA. So that's four HOAs up in the Villa Verde area, and I have quite a few comments. I got them all, probably about 15 of them, but I'll put them in one quick note here. It says, Dear Mayor Bedar, Councilman Vienna Weber, Ebner, Maccano, and City Staff, we residents of San Dimas and the Villa Verde area would like to express our thoughts on the California black walnut trees. We are not in support of adding this tree species to the San Dimas Protected Tree Status on the San Dimas Tree Code Ordinance. I know we're not here for that. It's just a review from staff. We may not get there, but I'm just letting you know the numbers. In these four HOAs, there are probably 1,500 residents up in the Villa Verde area. The current report done by Parks and Rec, I appreciate that. We've been waiting for that for a few months. And staff, that was just posted this weekend, it's really not a true picture of the 99% of the private scenic easements where LA County Parklands areas where these tree species grow in San Dimas in the Villa Verde area. The areas the California black walnut trees thrive and die in are in the canyons and actually are in the severe fire zone areas. I talked to the new fire inspector, LA County today, the one that we're here for the meeting that we all had months ago. He's gone, so we have a new one. His name is Terrence. He gave me the maps that you guys have in your packets regarding severe fire hazard areas. If you look, Chino Hills Walnut, San Dimas, most of California is a high fire zone area. These trees grow in the severe fire zone areas that HOAs, residents, private owners, LA County has to pay for, not the city of San Dimas. The, these tree shrubs also grow low to the ground, and they don't meet the fire code ordinance or the maintenance codes in the state of California. Most of California that they grow in, like I said, are in the fire zones, and you have the maps. HOAs and homeowners that are now scrambling with our budgets and high tree maintenance costs to meet the California State Fire, LA County brush clearance inspections of 2023, we're scrambling just to keep our own regular trees up to budget. If we have to protect this tree, we have to do the mustard seed grasslands around them, which is the severe fire zone grass that we're having a problem paying for that as well, but we have to do it to maintain our lands. These trees have toxins in them, they kill plants around them, and they're harmful to animals. There are no numbers, there are no numbers in the report, no measured numbers. So once again, if the city would like to do a study of all the walnuts, great, let's get a number.
Thank you, ma'am.
We feel that they should not be protected.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there's, these are the true pictures of the trees.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning any matter? All right. I just have a, I'll bring it up later. Okay. We'll move to the consent calendar. All items in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted when one motion, unless a member of the City Council requests a separate discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to other business. Consideration and adoption of Resolution 2023-52 approving the Civic Center Park rental policy, allowing a certain private event rentals for the Civic Center Park. Scott Wasserman? You're not Scott Wasserman?
I am not Scott.
Jay Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to give the report on the consideration for adoption for the Civic Center Park rental policy. Summary basically is the Park and Recreation Department would like to implement a new Civic Center Park rental permit that enables members of the public to rent Civic Center Park for the private events and activities. As far as recommendations, staff recommends the City Council would adopt the Resolution 2023-52, adopting a Civic Center Park rental policy that will allow members of the public to rent Civic Center Park and authorize the city manager or designate to implement such policy and reasonable changes as necessary to provide for private events and activities. As far as physical impact, it's undetermined. The park rental will generate revenue based on the fees assessed. Background, the Park and Recreation Department periodically receives inquiries and requests to rent the Civic Center Park. The creation of a Civic Center Park rental policy will provide the guidance necessary to facilitate the rentals. Fees from this new policy will be based on existing fees in the city's master fee schedule. This special, this will discussion and analysis, the special event policy will create an opportunity for members of the public to rent Civic Center Park to conduct private events or activities with an approved city permit. Examples of potential park rentals include family picnics, concerts, birthday celebrations, or the use of the park for private special events. At this time, staff is proposing that only Civic Center Park be made available to the public for private events. Civic Center Park was chosen due to the availability of ample parking and the proximity to the Plumber Community Building and Senior Center Multipurpose Room, which are also available for public rentals. The procedures and requirements included in the proposed park rental policy are similar to the city's current facility rental procedures, which have been in place for years. Some highlights of the policy will include a permit issued by the city of San Dimas will be required for any private event for which the attendance of 50 plus, 50 or more is anticipated. A permit issued by the city will be required for any private event proposing the use of amplified sound. Proposed events and activities must comply with all laws and ordinance, all local laws and ordinances, and only Civic Center Park may be rented for private use. If this is approved, we would like to basically come back in about 10 to 12 months to give a report to the Parks and Rec Commission and then back to the City Council to give an update on how things are going. That pretty much concludes my report. If you guys have any questions or comments?
I do have a question. The policy itself, is that driven by what we've perceived as a demand for the park rental by other outside entities?
We've had one outside entity that has rented or used the park every year, annually. And it's usually in the springtime. We've had inquiries, but no one who's actually pursued it.
Okay, thanks.
Do you, I think I see on the horizon, every other park we have in the city, people wanting to rent a portion of it for their birthday parties. And I think the cities around us, like Laverne, requires a permit for gazebo's and, you know, items like that, which create, you know, an issue for other, other people, you know, of the public wanting to set up an area. You know, people now get there at 5:00, 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, and they put caution tape, and they do all kinds of other things. Is there an appetite at all within the Parks and Rec sphere to start looking at something like that? Is this just the first step of an ongoing potential change?
I can honestly say that at this point, we don't have any, we don't have any desire to expand this. We want to see how this works with just this park. This park is perfect with, like I said, with the amenities that are available. The fact that we can park over 100 people there. It's got a stage, it's got electricity. The other parks don't offer those amenities. And from what I understand from staff, the people who are doing the first come, first served basis at the other parks for parties and things like that, there hasn't really been an issue, and we don't get a lot of complaints about it. So I don't see us moving in that direction anytime soon. And for those who do ask about that, we give them the numbers to either local cities or to the LA County parks so that they can pursue that.
Superb, thank you.
How was the, the resident, Doren came up earlier and talked about the time impact. How was the time selected? And is there any flexibility from staff to?
I think the time was adopted from the same thing we do when we use the sports fields. We can easily make an adjustment to that. I don't foresee us allowing amplified sound at 8:00 AM anyway, but I think we can make an adjustment to fix that, to accommodate that.
On that gospel event, they have amplified sound, right?
Yes, they do.
And when do they like to start?
You know, I'm not sure what time they start. 3:00? Okay, so it's in the afternoon, yeah. The only, the only known event that I know of that has amplified sound in the morning is the Easter egg hunt. And I believe we do that at 10:00 AM. So that's the earliest that we, we've done it. I can't imagine us allowing anybody else to come in there and blast something at 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM.
I think we did for 5K.
Right. When the city, when the route for the 5K and the?
5K, we've done it, but it's, it's, it was when we did it here, we did have it, but it was as amplified as it would be if it was in the parks, because we were doing it within the, in the parking lot of the City Hall. And then it was basically just to announce, a lot of the, that was done on Bullhorn. And then I know we do the singing of the National Anthem, and then we do the start, and that's just a starter gun, but we try to keep that at a minimum. And that is early, and we are bringing that back this year.
To this location? Yeah. I, I thought one year there was kind of ongoing energetic music to get those toddlers to run as fast as they possibly could, so.
That's usually at the finish line. So that's probably, what, 30 minutes into the race? So yeah, they do that just to encourage the runners.
Okay.
Doren, does 10:00 work for you? I mean, is that a, oh, okay, all right, yeah. Works for me, too.
Yeah, 10:00 is kind of good. I had just one question about, and I asked this earlier with the dress, but can you just explain for the public about commercial activities? Say somebody wants to put up a, do a carnival and charge admission and do that, or do some kind of major food truck gathering, a private event on the park?
There's actually, see, there's an ordinance, it's Chapter 1316161 that prohibits commercial activity in public parks and facilities. So we would abide by that.
Okay.
So we would not allow it.
That, yeah, that answers that question. The only other concern I have is the number of times that we might be renting out like a large part, portion. I mean, people doing birthday parties in a smaller area every weekend is, or however often that is, that's fine. But I'm worried about, the only thing I'm concerned about is a large event that takes up half or most of the park. And, you know, are we going to be having those week after week? Was there a limit on that?
I can give you a pretty good estimate on that. Right now, we're booking out the Plumber Building and the Senior Center. It's from now until December, there are 22 available Saturdays. Of those 22, six are available that you could rent the park. We would not allow it to be rented when we double book, because we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have enough parking here to be overrun. So the idea there is it's about a 17% availability rate. So, I mean, actually, it's 27% availability rate, right, from now to December. So we don't anticipate a lot of people coming in and renting. I don't foresee that happening because I don't think we're going to have it available.
So would you prefer to not put a limit of some kind, an actual number in the policy? And maybe when you do come back to the Parks and Rec Commission and the City Council a year, give an update and let us see how it's going?
I think that'll see, I think, because we can only book out six months at a time, I think we'll be able to get a better understanding of how it looks in a year. But I don't anticipate more than four or five rentals a year.
All right.
Yeah, I think it might, and I think I'm stretching that number.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything?
I just want to just make sure that I understand that these are for large events, and somebody could rent the things. But if the local neighbors like Doren or somebody wants to go across the street to the park and cordon off an area that's not rented out, he could still have his grandchild, kid's birthday party in the park like any other park.
Yeah, if you're, if you're not a large group that meets the specifications listed within the policy, you're more than welcome to use the park at your will, just like any other park. If you want to have a birthday party, if you go and you occupy an area that's not being occupied, you can have a party.
All right. Thank you.
We are not restricting anybody from using the park.
Okay.
If no one has anything else, I would make a motion to?
I do. I thought you were going to ask.
Oh, no, 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 I'm ready to.
So the, the park, when they rent it, is it an all or nothing type of scenario? Either you rent the whole park or?
You would rent the whole park. There's one area that we would keep accessible, and that would be the equipment. But we could easily mark off with signs as to what is or is not available.
So when someone rents the park, that obviously is theirs to use for the designated time period. How is that enforced? So say, for example, families do want to go over and they cordon off an area. Is someone out there saying, I'm sorry, this is for rental? Are there signs out? How is that?
There will be signs out, but there's also be a staff that'll be assigned, just like we do for the rentals of the Plumber Building and the Senior Center.
Okay. Has, I saw that we have noise restrictions. Is there a curfew for when the park would, they'd have to clear out of the park? Is that part of the policy?
As far as the amplified sound, when that?
Well, not just amplified sound, but if somebody is there, you know, they, that's dealt with it. What is it, 9:00 or something like that?
10:00 would be the time that they would have to vacate.
That's when they would have to vacate, okay. And do other cities surrounding us, do they rent out their parks? And if so, what does that look like?
Yes, there are a few of them that do rent them out. We did check that prior. And it varies on what their restrictions are. A lot of them have different requirements. There wasn't anybody that's similar to us, because most of them rented out majority of their parks, and we're?
We're the only ones that don't rent out parks right now?
We're, we're in the minority.
And then of the, the one recurring rental, how has that been handled? It's just been more of an ad hoc thing since the policy's not in place at the moment?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
You said that there is an annual occurring event?
Yeah, there's, there's one event that does occur. It's a, it's a church event.
How do they, how have they been handled? Has it been more just an ad hoc policy?
They've been just coming out and using it, and then, you know, we weren't approached on it. And then finally, we were approached on it, and I believe March of 2022 is when this was addressed before council, which brings us to this point.
Got it. So they've just been going out there early saying that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I see how that works. Do you anticipate any other events besides that one? You said you, that was really the only one that you experienced.
That's the one that we have that we know we're going to count on that's going to show up. I mean, I obviously anticipate getting inquiries from other people.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
I have one other point before we go to make a motion. And this is probably more directed towards Chris. A couple of meetings ago, we approved a street sweeper for the city, replacement street sweeper, so we'll have a nice new? So we'll have a nice new street sweeper to clean up our streets. So if there were to be on the trash point that Mr. Barnes had, if there were to be an excessive amount of trash in the street, I see that we are taking a deposit. Is that something that we could send the street sweeper out and then charge back the, the renter out of, out of the deposit money?
We could as well as there's an attachment that allows us to clean storm drains. So should any of that material get to that point, we have that opportunity.
Great, thanks.
Is there a, a total, a maximum number of people that we will rent the park out to? Like, you know, 500?
I, I think it would depend on the, the type of event and what, what they're doing. If it's an event that's going to have a lot of overflow, I think that it, it all depends. I'd have to get with our Parks Manager and discuss exactly what that maximum would be. We don't have a specific number at this moment.
Okay, and that could be a problem, you know?
It could be, yes. But that, that'd be part of the evaluation process when a person puts in their application. Cause they're going to have to identify how many people they anticipate being at the, at the park.
Okay, and then what, what arrangements are going to be made for restroom facilities for this number of people? No matter how many.
The restroom facilities, that's why we cannot rent the park out if both facilities are booked. So if both, if one building is vacant, then that would be the facility that they would access to use the restrooms.
Okay, what if they decided they wanted to bring porta potties and stuff in?
We're not allowing that.
Okay. Okay, so we have no specific number at this point?
I, I don't. At this point, I don't. But I mean, we take it on a case by case basis and depending on what the event would entail, would, would decide that.
Yeah, now you're Scott Wasserman.
I'm, I'm the real Scott Wasserman. That's correct.
Okay.
As far as the number, Jay, Jay's correct that we, we evaluate the totality of the event, the participation. Obviously, we're not going to, we're not going to book an event that's going to have 500 cars because we know we don't have that much parking. So the purpose of the permit is really to allow us to control the events, control things like the amplified sound, the parking, the hours of the event. So that it, we can make the amenity available to the community, but at the same time, be respectful of the neighborhood.
Okay. So let's kind of watch the number because the number can, can grow expeditiously, pretty, pretty quickly. You know, because first off, they're going to tell you, we're going to have 500. And then that means 750 or 1,000 or whatever. And I think the neighborhood, one, will run out of parking. And two, anytime you, you know, they actually could require additional, you know, sheriff services or anything like that. So those are the, are they going to be required to supply their own security or what are they doing?
At this moment, no, because we, it, it would depend on the scope of the, what the event was, would, would define that. Obviously, we would let the sheriffs know if there were an event to be out there and what day and time that would be and what type of event it would be.
Yeah, I know that I, I really didn't know much about the gospel group that came last year. But they were relatively respectful of the community and things like that. So I think, you know, events like that, you know, would be welcoming. But you could just very simply get off into, the next thing I know, the rodeo will want to do the rodeo in the middle of the park. So I just would be concerned. All right? Any, any other?
You bring up some good points, Mayor, and I just, so this makes me think. So would we allow, we, we don't allow alcohol in the park. So we couldn't have like a wine and beer walk?
No, that would not be permitted.
Could have a Pepsi and RC Cola walk. That's about it. Okay. I'm just thinking about drawing huge crowds. That's-
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that would be consideration is the parking aspect of it. I think that would be defined how many people could come, especially if we're having another event within one of the buildings. That right there is going to let us know we're limited to parking. So if they come in, we're saying, we're going to have 300 people. We could tell them right then and there, we're not going to be able to grant you a permit for that day because we are already going to be full to capacity. So I think that's what it would be judged on. We don't have any intentions on overrunning the neighborhood or our own parking lot.
Is there something in the policy that lets people, I, I read it. I can't remember though, if there's something that makes it clear to applicants that there is discretion on the part of the staff?
Yes, yes, there is.
That's in there?
That is definitely in there.
I understand that. Okay, great.
And?
This is, this is more for the, for the city manager as well as the city attorney. In approving this, do we need to, with included in that motion, does it need to include an adjustment of the time? As well as, I don't see any mention of the curfew in here. Does that need to be in here as well? You said 10, but I, I can't seem to find it in the policy and I may have overlooked it.
If you wanted to disallow amplified sound before 10:00 AM, then yes, you should include that in your motion. And the curfew, is that in the policy? Oh, it's already in the Minnesota code?
It's part of the code.
Got it. Okay. Great.
All right, are we, are we sure? I mean, Woodstock might come to San Dimas, so I want to make sure we've got through.
You know what, there's a lot of things that come to San Dimas that we, we, we're all surprised about.
I move that we adopt Resolution 202352 with two modifications. One, changing the start time to 10:00 AM. And two is the inclusion of language that encourages that those, the applicants or the permittees shall make every effort to ensure they mitigate negative impacts of the event to adjacent properties to the park.
Second.
I have a question about that, just to clarify. There is, there's two separate rules in the policy. One is, says that the events can start at 8:00 AM. And then there's another one that says amplified sound can start at 8:00 AM. So do you want to say that the events cannot start before 10:00 or just that the sound can't start before 10:00?
Just the sound.
Well, that's a tough one, I suppose, because setting up the event, I mean, presumptively, when you start the sound, you're starting the event. So I guess for staff, if, if we were, what's the posturing as it relates to? If it's going to start at 10:00 AM, which would be the amplified sound thing, would you allow someone to set up and do all that? And would that time be included then through the permit? Or is that a condition that you guys would look to set?
I would, I have no problems with someone coming in and doing a setup at 8:00 AM and then doing amplified sound at 10:00. We can do that on a case by case, but we currently do that for the Easter egg hunt. We're out there setting up at 8:00 AM, but we don't turn on sound until 10:00.
All right, so for the purposes of the motion specifically, no amplified sound, you know, until 10:00 AM.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for a great report and we appreciate, I know that it's going to make the, at least the gospel people very, very happy that they don't have to keep coming here each, each time. All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, we'll move on to number two. Review to discuss the possible direction of staff, want to report on black walnut trees.
I'm not Scott Wasserman either. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Steve Farmer, Landscape Manager. On January 10th, 2023, the council directed the Parks and Recreation Department to do a, present information on the black walnut tree. The staff solicited questions from the City Council to further address questions they might have regarding this tree. At the time, there was no direction given or a process for making a decision or recommendation. At this point in time, the staff has submitted the report with all the questions and the answers. At this time, would ask you accept the report and if you have any further questions of that tree of the staff.
Okay. Any further questions or any questions?
I had a question, Steve, about your answer to the fire question. So that you, the question's great that you put in here. What kind of dangers do black walnut trees pose relative to fire danger? And you have a good answer regarding how black walnuts can recover from fire because they do recover very well. I think that what I was looking for in addition to that was how, what is the, what kind of fire risk to the landscape, to neighboring properties, to the habitat itself? Do black walnut trees pose?
If you look at the fire map, almost all trees are at risk for fire. The current fire map includes a large portion of the city, includes the majority of our trees. So to say a tree is resistant to fire is not accurate.
Yeah, I understand that. And so your answer was that it can recover from fire pretty well?
It recovers well.
Totally understand that.
On our fire map, all trees are at risk.
All trees pose a risk?
Correct.
So if there is a tree, especially a bunch of trees together, especially dry trees, then they pose a risk or maybe a greater risk if they're dry?
Correct.
And, and you're not distinguishing eucalyptus from citrus, from ash, from black walnut?
Not distinguishing by species, no.
Okay.
So I think, I want to follow up on that question. I think what the question is really getting at is that we have restrictions in terms of what we need to do to ensure compliance with fire zones. And what's not clear to me in that answer is how that fits in. The, if you have these on and then you have requirements from fire departments to do brush clearing and other types of maintenance, what does that, what does that mean for black walnut trees?
That applies to all trees, not just black walnuts. Where on the question, you're, you're trying to single out-
But in the other, but then the other part of the, of your answers though, you say that it doesn't require a whole lot of maintenance or, or is very minimal maintenance? I wasn't sure what you meant by occasional pruning. So in the case of the HOA, what I'm trying to understand is they're spending a lot of money pruning these trees to ensure that they're in compliance with fire code. That seems to be different than the occasional pruning that you mentioned here. And that's what's not really clear to me.
The occasional pruning is based on the growth pattern of the tree, not based on their fire resistance. So a well, a well-maintained black walnut tree doesn't require a lot of pruning. One of the issues that the HOA has run into is the trees have, in the open area, have not been trimmed on a regular basis. And now they're addressing years of, of a lack of maintenance. So for them, it's going to, they're going to incur a higher cost because they have to be very aggressive in getting their trees under control. The people that came up and spoke referenced our, our cost on trees. When the city contracted with the West Coast Arborists, they were very aggressive in coming into the city and trimming every tree. But we also put those trees in a trim program for the, for the last 15 years where they're trimmed every four years. We're very aggressive in our tree maintenance program here in the city. However, that's community owned trees, that's not private property trees. When you have open space districts and scenic easements, those are rarely trimmed as frequently as our community trees are. So you get an abundance of overgrowth on those trees. And now with the change in the fire code being more aggressive, there's going to be increased costs for those people to cut the trees back on their property.
Okay. So I think that the problem I have with the answers in this is that most of the answers, at the end of the day, we're trying to decide what to do with trees, the majority of which are on private HOA property. The problem with these answers is that it addresses the five trees that are city trees. So what I'm trying to understand, are in fact, these trees diseased? Are they, have they not been pruned? Have they not been maintained? What's the cost? Because here you have, the cost is something like $80 and the HOA is spending, I think, four times that is what someone had said in the open comments. So it's really, really hard for me to understand what can be done when you're talking about the city trees in your report. But the topic at hand is really about the trees, the majority of which are on private HOA land.
If, if I may, Steve. Our, our understanding of the report was that council asked for information on black walnut trees. And I think we understood ahead of time that there wouldn't be a recommendation attached to the report. So we received questions, specific questions from council members and we, we provided the best responses that we could. So I, I don't, I guess I don't, the five trees that we have in our inventory, that's accurate. We, we don't have a lot of black walnuts that we plant in public rights of way. And it is accurate that most of those trees are out in the open space areas. We don't maintain those. They're not part of the 9,400 trees that the city planted or that we maintains. So we don't, we don't know a lot about them other than to say if they're in open space areas, they're likely have a lot of overgrowth and haven't been, haven't, haven't been pruned regularly.
So that's the struggle that I'm coming up with then is if we do come up with some sort of a policy that impacts trees on private land and we don't have any information that informs that decision? I, I don't know exactly how to interpret that, if that makes sense. Because the five trees that are in the city don't represent the trees that are the main basis of the topic of conversation.
Correct. And all, all the information that we provide on black walnut trees, that, that's accurate irrespective of to whom the, the tree belongs or where it's located?
Okay. There was one question I had. So in, on page two of the Agenda Staff Report, California black walnut is recognized, this is a second sentence, California black walnut is recognized as a threatened species due to the loss of, a loss of habitat from development, overgrazing, increased recreational use of walnut woodlands? And then the next answer, it's classified, the second sentence as well. Southern California black walnuts are currently classified as near threatened. I, I'm not really sure what the difference is between threatened and near threatened. Can you elaborate on that?
It's based on the organization defining its status. We use two agencies for referencing on this. One is the USDA Department of Forest, Forestry Department, excuse me, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So there's two, two different rankings on that. They're basically at this point, a threatened species. They're not endangered, they're just threatened.
So it's, so what does near threatened mean then and who's classifying near threatened? And what's the difference between near threatened and threatened?
Threatened is their habitat is failing and the trees are, the tree count is diminishing.
Okay. And then near threatened is?
Basically the same thing.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. I will say I have a little bit different take. I think your report was sufficient and I think it answers a lot of the questions. I think the whole, I understand what the purpose and how this came to be, given the history of it. But in my opinion, this is outside of scope for us to further discuss. And frankly, my preference would be to receive, file and take no further action on this item. I think you guys have sufficiently answered the questions. And frankly, the determination on threatened, on threatened and endangered are done by people who have high levels of education and expertise in this particular matter that I don't think at least us five common folk are going to figure out here. But, but I do think based off of your report and the experts you drew upon, you've sufficiently answered this question. And it's also important to note that yes, these trees aren't on private property. I think the five trees that are here, we understand and I do agree. I mean, the, looking at it very pragmatically from a policy perspective, trees are trees, at least as it relates to this. The other trees that are protected are protected by swift action by the state and other regulatory agencies. And I think that's sufficient for answering the question at bay here.
Everybody? I, I just, and it not necessarily deals with black walnut trees. I've read more about black walnut trees in this report than I, whatever. As I told somebody earlier this evening, if I drove down the street, I'm not sure I'd be able to point out a, a black walnut tree. But the question is, in say my backyard or your backyard or anybody else's backyard, if there was a tree to be removed, the city requires a, to get a permit. Okay? Is the HOA required to get a permit for every one of those trees that they want to remove? And is there a fee for that? If, if they want to remove them or whatever? My question is really simple, it's, they're on private property. My backyard is private property, but yet I'm still required to put in a plan to, and ask permission to remove the tree. And then I got to pay a fee for it. What, what, what's different between me and the HOA with their 95,000 trees?
As I understand it, there is no difference. That's, that's Title 18 of the municipal code, that's through the planning department. For me in the Parks Department, I work under Title 13, which is public trees. So the, the private tree process, I believe, is no fee for the permit, but it still takes planning approval. And one caveat on tree removal is trees above eight inches require a permit, trees below eight inches do not. So there is still some leeway for a resident to remove a tree, depending on the size of the tree.
Okay.
Without a permit.
All right. Any other questions?
I, I just did have a question or a comment, I guess. So I think one of the answers is, is really tells the story about black walnuts. And it's the one on the page 145 near the top, so the second page of the staff report. talks about stands of black walnuts are currently classified, or no, I'm sorry, stands are considered to be rare and threatened in California. And I think it's good to realize that a stand, a bunch of trees, is one thing, and a single tree is another, especially when it comes to black walnut trees. So when you talk about like an oak woodland or something like that, you're talking about like a lot of oak trees and the other things that are around it, that seem to grow in that kind of habitat. In this case, stands throughout the state of California, while there's not like only a dozen or something like that, it's not like they're, they're almost all gone. As one of the speakers said earlier, this stand in the HOA is one of those rare occurrences throughout the state. So that's why cities like the City of Walnut and Chino Hills, which also have stands of trees, have some special protection for the trees. And it, and it goes to protecting the environment or the habitat that goes with the black walnut trees. I will be the first to admit that the black walnut trees aren't the most attractive tree, in my opinion. And I think the pictures that have been provided are pointing that up, especially when they are dormant, which is for a long time in the year. I probably wouldn't plant one in my front yard, I'll bet. Maybe I would if I wanted to have sort of a, some artistic value to it. But, but on the other hand, it's a, it's a valuable tree. And, and it is threatened. And so that's why some cities have special protections for it, and similar to the oak trees. That's probably the only comment I'm gonna, I'm gonna make.
Can I ask one question before we move forward on anything? In the, I, I know Councilmember Nakano asked what near threatened meant. As far as I'm familiar with, I'm not exactly familiar with the different tiers of, of endangerment for trees. But as I'm familiar with for species, there would be like the, I guess, the flow of how endangered something is goes from least concerned, near threatened, threatened, endangered, critically endangered, extinct in the wild, and extinct. So as it, I, I don't know if that's similar for trees itself. So I don't know where in the spectrum of how endangered something is, near threatened is.
It's similar scale.
Okay.
Same language.
So, you know, as I, just, my take on it is, as I read it, I don't read near threatened as actually, I don't interpret that as threatened. I interpret that as, it's almost threatened. And, and it in fact falls, if that, if that is similar for the scale that we're looking at here, it's the second to, it's right next to, you know, least concern. So.
My, my, my thought and, and I, you know, obviously going to, the council will probably just receive the report, which again, I appreciate the report. There probably were some follow-up questions that we could have, and we got the answers to. But I appreciate the report. I'm not going to push the issue unless there's somebody else who wants to take a look at Glendale, or City of Walnut, or Chino Hills, and what their ordinances look like. I'll just make a comment that when it comes to the environment, it's, it goes with the built environment and the natural environment. So the built environment is also important. And these decisions that we make up here, they last a really long time. And I think it, looking back, it's the wise city council who is very forward-looking to the future, out 100 years. And if we see that something in the natural environment is diminishing and near threatened or threatened, both words are used here, rare is used, then it would probably be a, I think we'd be looked upon kindly if we protected the things before, the natural things before they disappear. And so that's my only thought on it. And besides that, I won't push the issue of coming up with protection, although that's what I think we should do.
My, my question about, I understand where you're going with the protection and stuff, but if we was to move in that direction, okay? Then how does that work out for the financial burden that we're placing on the HOA? We're sitting here saying, this tree is, you know, protected. And yet they have, I don't know how many, you know, black walnut trees, I have no idea. But we've already said that it cost us 80 bucks to trim a tree, and they're saying it's cost them $350 or $400 a tree. That number goes up, you know, expeditiously. And then, what are they going to get that money? They're going to lay it back onto their homeowners. So now we have 1,200 homeowners upset because we've now, we have christened this tree, not the state, but we have christened it as to be, you know, a sanctioned tree. I'm, I'm concerned about that because that is a financial responsibility that has to be pushed off to somebody else. And if we're pushing it off, then I don't know how, where that comes down to fairness.
Those who planned the Villa Verde Ridge development, when they planned it, they had a developer, like anything else, who wanted to build a bunch of houses. The developer probably wanted to build more houses than they ended up building. Part of the, and this is a long, long before my time, but part of the deal, the bargain, the contract that was made, was that, yes, you can build these houses. Yes, we're going to put a road up the spine of where Cai Christine is right now, in Paseo Lucian, Lucia. But we're going to do all that, but in return, those folks, you the developer, are going to let those folks know who enjoy that envi, who get to enjoy that environment, that you have to maintain that open space environment forever. That is the deal that is made. So that's, that's the, that's the cost one. Now, I would be perfectly happy if anybody wanted to take a look and say, see the City of Walnut, which is of course like, if you've been to Walnut, you know what kind of a hillsides and trees and fire danger that city is, having grown up near there. But, so it'd be interesting to see how they handle that whole kind of thing, because that is an interesting question. But again, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, or make clear to everybody that there is a value in the open space and in the trees, at least as far as I'm concerned. But other than that, I don't have anything to say except to answer a question.
Oh. So I, I just want to make a comment. This decision for me is complex and complicated. I know that others may comment, interpret it differently. They need more information. I ask a lot of questions to understand how to make a decision on something like this. All the questions I'm asking are really getting at one issue. Do black walnuts in, on private property deserve special protections or special processes? Or do they not? And that's why, when I was looking at the report, because they didn't talk about these particular black walnuts, it's hard for me to make that determination. I am very sympathetic to the HOA, who have to spend a lot of money maintaining these trees on rough terrain. Apparently, they weren't maintained properly for years, and so it's even more expensive now. And so that is why I'm trying to ask questions as to whether or not, what the cost of these are, do these deserve specific protections? And if so, what those may be? And without that, I can't make any determination as to that question or not. So where I'm at today is I, I don't have anything to move forward with a recommendation for protections. However, because the questions are still open, I would move to have some of the, we have a new commissions being formed, or new members coming in. I would have them look at this issue further. And if they find any reasons for black walnuts deserving special protection, then they should research that and make a recommendation, and the council at that point can accept or reject those recommendations. Without that, I have no position on this, and I can't take a position on this until that information is provided.
Was that a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm raising it to council as something that I might recommend doing. I think I may make a motion, I just wanted to see what people's reactions are to that before moving forward. Personally, today, I don't think the council should move in making any kind of...
Didn't you already make a motion?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I don't think the council today should make any kind of recommendation or proposal on black walnuts. There's no information.
Well, the way I understood, the way I understood it, Eric, was that all we were, had requested was a report. And there was no action, you know, at this point, I think John even said, no, I'm just, I want a report, that's all I want. So I don't think, you know, there is an action to be taken here at this point. If, if it's tabled, you can always ask more questions or accept it and...
The only thing that I would say that is sticking out to me, if black walnuts weren't under this category of threatened, I would feel fine just walking away and saying, this is the HOA's property, these are their trees. Threatened to me implies some consideration. I don't actually know whether or not it warrants that. And so that's why, for me, that implies we should, at the very least, have some other party look at this and say, no action, some action, or whatever their recommendation is.
It's funny, I had, had asked John a day or so ago about the Parks and Rec Commission. And I asked our city manager today about the Parks and Rec Commission, his review of this, and he reminded me that we did not ask at that period in time to have the Parks and Rec Commission look at it. Is that not true?
Yes, but I wanted to provide some context. So the original request came in January 10th of this year from Councilmember Ebner, and I think you were the second. So we agendized it for the 24th of that January. It was specifically agendized for consideration of putting restrictions on the trees and to provide additional information. And one of the first things that was brought up by Councilmember Ebner at the time, related to also making this referral to Parks and Recreation. The ultimate action taken by the council, which was a motion by Councilmember Ebner and a second by Councilmember Vienna, was specific to just a report. And in fact, if you remembered, I quipped that the timeline would be what staff would set, and I said, well, how about five years? And then we joked, laughed, and we joked about it. Because the entire discussion was centered on the heels of complaints filed against the Villa Verde Ridge for cutting trees during the Christmas holiday in December of 2022. And so the, I, I asked during that meeting to make very clear, okay, we're just talking about an informational report for the sake of information, not for the basis of making a recommendation. And so I know the questions that came in from two council members, some of them related to fire, the ones that you had raised were related to fire and whatnot, but the ultimate action in it was just provide a report. And so if the, if the council wants to take a further step, the recommendation would be, if you do this, would be asking to agendize for a future council meeting, a discussion of what action you want to take. Because as of right now, there is nothing in the agenda that telegraphs to the public that the council would be considering a regulatory change on black walnuts. So I, I don't feel it's appropriate to be able to take that direction today, and I would, you know, ask the city attorney if you desire to do so.
I, I wouldn't mind just clarification on that for anything future, as well as this. Jeff, just as, we've got an agendized item, it is informational only. Being on the agenda, is it possible to say something like, oh, we want the Parks and Rec Commission to take a look at this?
I, I think it's acceptable for you right now to say you want the Parks and Recreation Commission to take a look at this. That's not deciding that the council wants to adopt any kind of regulation. That's asking for a future agenda item. For the council or for a commission, which Chris is correctly saying that you can do.
So the, so the motion would be to agendize it and then ask to move it forward, not to move it forward?
Yes, essentially. You can bring back another agenda item to discuss regulations of black walnuts, either at the council or at a commission meeting.
So, so I had one question related to that. I, I don't necessarily feel that we need an agenda item, I would just refer to them, and they can look at it as they want. And if they feel that there's reasons or what have you to do something at that point, then it can be an agenda item? Is that a possibility, or does it have to be an agenda item? Today, I don't feel like council should act on this, except to say, this commission, which has jurisdiction over it, if you want to look at it further, you're welcome to.
You can request that a commission take it up tonight. Tonight, you can do that.
I think for that, you need three votes, though. I mean, you need a majority to refer it to commission.
I think that's, I think that's correct, because it's the two votes to bring a council item back, but to refer it to a commission is...
I think what Eric is talking about isn't bringing more council action or an agendized item for the council, just, but that would take, two people can't just say, oh, I want a commission to look at stuff.
How, how much staff's time has been spent on this already? I mean, seriously? Because I'm about to lose my mind on this whole discussion right now. How much staff's time has been spent on this?
Several hours, several hours.
How many?
Roughly about 15 to 20.
15 to 20 hours?
Doing research.
This is bloody insane. This whole thing came up because of one HOA taking proactive steps to be able to address their landscaping issues, and this is just wild to me. I'll move that we receive, file, take no further action on this item, and direct staff to suggest to the Parks and Rec Commission, if they'd like to explore this item, that they do so, as in the spirit of Councilmember Nakano's comments.
I'll second that, but before we get to a vote, can I just get one more point of clarification? And that was, at the very beginning of this conversation, when we had it last year, the beginning of this year, whenever it was, there was some discussion as to whether these trees were threatened or not. And I think we still haven't quite gotten there. In the report I'm reading, near threatened. But just as a point of clarification, is that what we're, what we've determined, is that these trees are near threatened and not threatened?
The California Department of Fish and Wildlife calls them threatened.
The report says near threatened. Am I missing the part where they're threatened?
Actually, I'll have to check the report on that, because there was, there was two agencies quoted, and one was the Forest Service, one was the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. One is near threatened, one is threatened.
Oh, okay.
Our, our arborist is here tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay, would he have any better clarification on that, by, by chance?
He did most of the legwork on the report.
Pardon?
He did most of the legwork on the report, so his information is in the report. He, he's the one that spoke with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the clarification on the status.
All right. So I, I guess the, the question of whether they're threatened or not is still, I guess, up in the air.
Are these the last seven trees on earth? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be totally facetious, but I mean, this, you know, guys, how much more time are we going to spend on this particular topic? We have, we're literally now, it's 8:30. I mean, and I, I appreciate your points, but to be totally candid, that should have been done a long time ago. And frankly, in talking with the community members that even brought this forward, this has to deal with the fact that the HOA changed leadership, took proactive steps when their posturing, their understanding over time was that the city told them, oh, let those trees be, and they chose to let them overgrow and not maintain them over time to keep some of that vegetation and some of that natural look. So 100% get what you're saying, and I agree on something that merits it. But the minds of Fish and Wildlife, Forestry, and others have not said these are even near extinction level. I mean, really, you know? So we're, we're literally 15 hours of staff time, you know, we can go spin our wheels on other things, but I mean, this is, they're literally trying to do the right thing in taking care of their landscape. And unless we're willing to saddle the costs of that, put our monies where our mouth is, then I think we should just move on. This is a waste of taxpayers' time, and it's a waste of my time.
All right. Ryan, I understand. Go back to, go, go, go back to your original motion, where you added, or not the original, but the motion where you added that if someone wanted to say Parks and Rec, could you take a look at it?
Directed, that was part of the motion, was staff was directed to suggest to the commission, not to direct them to, but to suggest, if the commission would like to take this item up, go for it.
Okay. I can support that.
I can as well, I think it's a fair compromise. I understand that you're frustrated. However, I would just say that we're talking about tree policy in San Dimas, right? It's not, to me, it's not about the HOA. I have great, great sympathy for the HOA and the costs they've incurred, and the battle that they've had to go through to try to maintain their property. That issue is separate from whether or not a threatened species, according to the California Fish and Wildlife Department, warrants any protections here. And that's the question I'm trying to get at. And that is also why I recommended that we take no action, because I saw no reason for us to take action. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. This is not taking sides and... that that's clear. This is not taking sides on an HOA or trying to diminish them in any way. I actually am very, very sympathetic to their plight. But I do think that 15 hours in looking at a threatened species and how we deal with threatened species here in San Dimas is an important topic that does warrant some hours. And I hope you understand and accept where I'm coming from on that.
I do, and I hope you understand that I suspect the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and Forestry have spent way more than 15 hours. So when I see a recommendation from a governmental agency specifying that level, then I trust, because I'm familiar with those agencies, that their recommendation is good. And I trust that the staff is going to bring that stuff back to us. So I appreciate where you're coming from, but understand, Friday when this is published, as far as I'm concerned, these types of things, if they do warrant further follow-up, I think we should do that on our part, or at least trust the agencies that we're getting the information from.
But Ryan, I think that that's the point, though, is that I don't actually know what the recommendation comes with when it comes to threatened, right? And in this case, we have threatened and near threatened.
We're not the agency that makes that determination, therefore, I would suggest that going to the agency that does would be productive.
I understand, but that was a question at hand, though, that I was asking is, when you have something that's threatened, is there a recommendation that comes with it? And that's not clear in this document. That's why I'm asking the question.
I hear you.
All right, I'm going to bring it back. We have a motion, and we have a second. Okay, and I'm going to support the motion, but I agree that we could present it to the Parks and Rec Commission if they want to take it up. And they can. We're going to have a new Parks and Rec Commission, or a semi-new Parks and Rec Commission in about two weeks. And so, and it could be presented, and that would be presented, I believe, should be presented by Scott and his, and his crew.
It would be, but there's one additional piece that I want to remind the council. The city received a request for a municipal code text amendment to adjust Title 18 as it pertains to the review of trees on private property that are to be removed. So when more than three trees are to be removed, there's a requirement that it be reviewed by the DPRB in terms of that level of review. So there's a higher level of scrutiny for those trees. So there's a request to revisit that code to be able to reduce that restriction or reduce how it's implemented. And so the council will be having a conversation about triggering that code text amendment. And I think there's a nexus with that and this item here, because this, there is, this did come on the heels of what occurred on private property as it pertains to trees. And so I think you're going to end up having another conversation somewhat like this, as well as the Parks Commission if they take this up.
By bifurcating it, is that we're creating a bigger problem? You know, if we're talking about doing this now, now you're telling me that we're going to be, you know, it's going to eventually end up back at the DPRB, and they're going to go through this totally again, which is, so what?
My professional opinion is, this is all a policy call for the council. And so if you want to treat a certain tree a certain way, you can. But the discussions that we're entering into center around how we regulate trees on private property, and should we be changing that, which is what occurs with the DPRB. And so with that section of the code, so my recommendation would be to deal with the municipal code text amendment, because we're required to bring it forward to the council. And if there's something from there specific to certain types of trees, you can, we can address it during that discussion.
Yeah, but I think at this time, as one who would like the protections, I would say that at this time, the council hasn't directed that there be any change regarding protection of any species besides the oak, the coast live oak. So I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and it would be good to put it in, in a way, but I don't see that support right now. And I, I think the motion we have is a good one to just, if the Parks and Rec Commission wants to talk about it, and then they are wanting to do something, then let them make a recommendation.
So would that only be for black walnuts? Right? Because, I mean, I got, I got probably just as many people out there in the community would like to do the same thing with eucalyptus trees. Okay, so when do we, when do we finally get down to the tree, tree issue?
Again, that, that is.
Is that a part of your municipal text amendment, going to be?
No, the, what we want to handle the code text amendment is what was requested by the public, which is specific about how many trees are to be reviewed by DPRB and how that's reviewed. It has nothing to do with protecting certain trees. And so I'm just want to, I bring it up, because the conversation we're having today on the black walnuts is on the heels of the action that's leading to the municipal code text amendment.
All right.
To dispose of this item.
I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring this back to, back, and we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the motion, please?
The motion, enunciated by Councilmembers Vienna and Weber, was to receive, receive and file, and direct staff to suggest to the Parks and Recreation Commission to review this topic.
Oh, it was receive, file, and take no further action on this item, and then direct staff to suggest to the Parks and Recreation Commission to take up this item if they so choose.
All right. Okay. Any, any further questions? Any further comments?
One question related to the municipal text amendment, because the board is no longer in place, do those responsibilities then go to the Planning Commission? Or is that something that we need to, it's all part of that discussion? I recognize it's not part of this, but it was just something that arose since the process has changed.
Yep. Even with a change, there has to be a code change to make Planning Commission take the responsibility of DPRB.
Got it, okay. That was my question, is in what's happening in the interim. So, okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. It's only 45 minutes longer than I thought.
15 minutes for each subject.
Yeah, that's what you told me. Okay. All right, we're going to go to a discussion in direction of artwork project in Gold Line Bridge at the intersection of Cataract and Bonita Avenue. As you remember, we had Mr. Bachelor earlier. Is it going to be the real Scott Wasserman this time?
It is, the real Scott Wasserman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item pertains to bridge art. The mayor mentioned that we obviously have a new bridge at the intersection of Bonita and Cataract. And this is a project that would potentially develop and display artwork on the side of the bridge. The reason I'm coming back to council is, a lot has changed about this project, and there are a lot of things, I think, that we have learned recently, that we wanted to communicate with council to make sure that you're comfortable with it before you approve it. And just by way of background, in 2018, the City and LA Metro Gold Line Construction Authority, and I'm going to just refer to them as LA Metro, City and LA Metro executed a settlement agreement to settle a lawsuit the city had filed against a construction authority under the California Environmental Quality Act. And in the settlement agreement, both parties essentially agreed on a process to determine the design of the bridge and have input into the design of the bridge. The settlement doesn't actually mention anything about artwork. You did see earlier the artist Keith Bachelor, he talked about the four, he has the four, four sketches, I think they're more than sketches, the four drawings, those would be the four murals that would go up. Here are some of the issues that have changed. One of them, I want to make sure council's aware, we're recommending a different art media besides, the original idea was to paint metal sheets and then affix those, install those on the side of the building. And in doing research, staff found that.
The building or the bridge?
I'm sorry?
On the side or the building or the bridge?
The bridge, yes. Thank you. And one of the things we looked at, a different media, is the use of tiles. And essentially, the tiles, there's a process where the tiles, they get a really sharp image on there, whether it's a drawing or artwork, or I've even seen this in a park in Ontario, where they have tiles all around, and they're, they're really big, they're neat, they're big mosaics with black and white photos. So it's a very sharp kind of image quality. So that was one. Wanted to make sure council's comfortable with the use of tiles. Number two would be the maintenance. After discussing with LA Metro, there's a lack of clarity as to how this will be maintained and by whom. LA Metro, basically, they'll do the graffiti removal, and this would have a graffiti coating over it. So if anything's tagged, they would clean that up. Anything more than that, they would ask the city to reimburse them for the cost of making a repair. So as an example, if someone throws a rock and they crack a tile, and we need to replace that tile because it's in the middle of the mural, the city would be paying for that. The term of the contract with LA Metro, staff's preference would be to finalize an agreement that requires LA Metro to display and maintain the murals for the life of the bridge. LA Metro, their preference is that the contract terminates once the artwork is installed on the bridge. Our concern with that is that there's really legally nothing that would prohibit them from removing the artwork in the future, whether it's the next day or the next year. The city wouldn't have any legal recourse. Another concern, just the structure of the agreement with LA Metro specifically. Typically, for all of our projects, you've seen a lot of contracts here, we use the template that's provided by the city's insurer, Joint Powers Insurance Authority. It's touched up by the city attorney. It's a very formal type of agreement. That's what the city would typically use in this type of project. LA Metro would prefer to use a looser type of letter agreement. And their concern with the formal contract is simply, they're concerned about how long it would take them to get that approved on their end through the county. The artist contract, LA Metro has indicated that they would like to be a party of the artist agreement, which means they have to prove the scope of work. And this is, for them, this is mostly about the artwork design, ensuring that the design is appropriate for the side of their bridge, that any cultural representation is accurate, and that there are no copyright violations. The project cost, at the time, I think in 2021, the city council allocated $20,000. We now have an accurate cost projection, which is $116,000. This is coming from Prop C funds, so the city council would need to, direct staff to return with a supplemental budget allocation of $96,000. And those, those are all the big concerns. Project timeline, LA Metro would like to have the artwork no later than next October 2024. If council wishes to proceed, we don't foresee that timeline being challenging at all. So I've talked about just some of the quirkiness of this project, some of the things that changed, some of the requirements from LA Metro that make this a little more challenging. In the report, I give council three choices, if you wanted to proceed with the project, if you wanted to delay the project temporarily, or if you wanted to outright cancel the project. And with that, I'll take any questions.
If we cancel the project?
Pardon me?
If we cancel the project, would you just, it would be no artwork, it'd just be those pins that are sticking out?
That's correct. That's correct. So the, on the side of the bridge, you're alluding to, there are spaces that have been carved out specifically for this purpose. They're 10 feet by 15 feet, they're two inch recessed.
Does this, does this have anything to do with the station itself, the station art that?
No, it's separate.
Totally separate things.
Correct.
All right. Questions?
So, so if I could add to that, Mayor, what we're essentially asking the council tonight is if they want to accept the Gold Line and the Metro's ultimatum. Because there's nothing in writing right now that says Gold Line has to install this art on the bridge. So we've been trying to negotiate with them a deal, essentially. And Metro is saying, or Gold Line is saying, essentially, here are our terms, accept them or don't accept them. The city is going to pay for the ongoing maintenance of these murals if we, if they get put up, except for graffiti removal. Metro and Gold Line are agreeing to pay for graffiti removal. Metro is going to own these murals and will therefore be able to remove them at any time. Anytime they want to, they'll be able to remove them. Of course, we won't have to maintain them anymore if they're removed, but they'll be able to remove them at any time. And they want to have the, a letter agreement instead of a formal agreement. So it says here that the letter agreement would not even be signed. So this means that it would not be enforceable. It would be something like an unsigned handshake agreement with Metro, if you will.
Maybe they should just have like a text message agreement to make, or that informal.
Seemingly. And so that would essentially, the risk there is it essentially would mean that Metro, even though they say they're going to, they would not have to do graffiti removal. They wouldn't even have to put up the artwork at all if they didn't want to, because right now, there's nothing that says they need to put it up. So if the city wants to allocate the funding for, to have this artwork created, put it up on the bridge, pay for ongoing maintenance until Metro decides unilaterally, unilaterally, whenever they would like to, that they want to take it down, then we can do that. Then we can have a deal for the artwork to go up. But if the city council is not okay with paying for ongoing maintenance and for having Metro have the ability to remove the artwork at any time, then that's the other option, and the artwork will not go up. So that's.
So I guess I'm, the way I'm understanding this is that Metro holds all the cards and we hold nothing. So we, we just end up with a, an unfinished project at Metro's, you know, behest. I mean, just, why don't we just call them today, or tonight, first thing in the morning, call them, tell them to move their damn bridge out of, out of San Dimas and, and move forward. You know, if they don't, you know, they're not acting, they're acting like children. So, you know, I'm not saying we should act like children, but everything they want to do has no benefit to San Dimas at all. You know, and you're talking about the graffiti removal, and they're basically can say, no, we're not going to do it. We, we were forced to have a bridge. And I just don't understand how they could be so.
Well, I think, I think somewhere.
This is the Metro Board, this is not the Gold Line Board.
This is the Gold Line right now. This is the Gold Line right now. When the project is finished, Gold Line turns over ownership to LA Metro, but the agreement would be the same, that they would just transfer to the new agency. But somewhere along the line, the city, I guess, requested that artwork be put up on this bridge. And so we had to then negotiate a deal with, to manage and operate how that artwork would be maintained and how it would be put up. That's what we're doing right now. And these are the terms that Metro is giving to us.
And let me clarify, the discussion, or where it's codified, is in the settlement agreement the city entered into with the Gold Line, as it related to the design of the bridge and the lighting that sits on top. It was in that same agreement. And as many of the agreements, they're not very detailed, at least in respect to the bridge art, which is part of the issue, and which is why we've been always pushing to have more details. And so because of that, that is what allows us to put art up. And so the reason we're coming back to the council is, we're at the point where they will install the art. And so they will follow through on that aspect of it. But the caveat would be, after they've done this, and we incurred this more than $100,000 investment, everything else as it relates to that artwork going forward is at their control and behest. And so if somebody goes and takes a sledgehammer to it and destroys it, if we're obviously going to want to replace that, it's going to be at a full cost on our part. Or if Gold Line changes where they want to go, or Metro does, they have that choice going forward to say, we no longer want artwork, we could take it off. I don't think we have much of a choice. It's either going to be, it's, we're installing it and going with what they want, or we're not installing it, which would then leave.
But is that an item, is that an item that we can insure? Just like the fountain out here when they stole the little boys? Okay, we had it insured, we had the.
It would no longer be our property, it would be the Gold Lines. And then Metro, when it transfers over. So no.
So it would be up to them to ensure, then?
No, I, based on what we're getting, it sounds like, nope, it's, something happens to it, it's on you, but it's no longer yours. If you want artwork, you can replace it, but at your cost.
Okay, but I guess I understand what you're saying, but we could not insure it, even though we're stuck with it. And I mean, when I say stuck with it, I think we all know we got to put something, there's got to be something. Unless, unless we decide we don't want artwork at all, then they can plaster it in or do whatever they do.
It definitely would seem odd to be able to insure somebody else's property.
Yeah.
Honestly, it. Honestly, at this point in where we are, this is not one of those items that we can rewind the clock to fix the initial issues of not having the detail. My recommendation, I always like having you have options to decide on, but I think in this case, my recommendation is we just proceed as it is, but be aware of the exposures and know that, well, at some point, if something happens, then we'll just cross that bridge. No pun intended.
I had two questions. So the first is, how many other cities are installing work similar, artwork similar to ours?
All the stations.
All the stations or any other bridges?
Not anymore.
Okay, so we might be the only ones with that kind of particular artwork?
But what about, what about at Lone Hill? At Lone Hill, are they adding any artwork to that bridge? It looks like there, there's places for it.
This, this city is not, we don't have a project to add artwork there.
That's Glendora.
That's Glendora.
Crosses Lone Hill.
It's the Glendora Bridge. So my question would be, if you go by or you look, you can see there's large spaces, it appears, for artwork of some type. Maybe we could check with Glendora, you know, Public Works and find out what they're, how they're handling it.
So the second part of my question, which related to the first, is for other cities that are installing artwork, is this the same agreement that they're offering them? Because if it is, then in my mind, that answers the question of how.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know about the nature of the agreement that other cities have.
Okay.
That would be good, good to know. The Gold Line, so the bridge in particular has been a problem from day one, and we got nowhere near what we originally wanted to have for that bridge. And so it is what it is. But the Gold Line itself has, they do want their bridges and their structures to continue to look good over time. It's not like they're going to just allow that to be, you know, if it's, I think that, what they don't want to run into is if somebody does vandalize it and we're not prepared to pay the replacement cost, then what happens next? They don't want it sitting there vandalized for a long time, because that in itself is a, is a bad look. So I totally get it. I, you know, I wish we had control over that, complete control over the artwork on the bridge, and it's just not that way. So like Chris, if we're gonna, it's either going to be a big blank space for a long time, because they're not going to allow us in after this. It's going to be really hard to get something in later on, even if it's the best idea in the world. And so I reluctantly want to go forward. I, I guess we've negotiated till we're blue in the face, and they're just not going to go with a formal contract, it sounds like.
So, you know, this is just, of course, my opinion and just throwing it out there into the ether, not, not saying that this means anything at all. But I think the expenditure that we're talking about for this, this artwork is significant enough, and I think the mayor brings up a good point in that we may not be able to insure it. So if and when it does get damaged, then we may be out of pocket for the entire replacement cost, which is significant. And I agree with you, I don't think Metro is going to go tear it down at any point or, you know, I, I don't think that's a possibility. But more likely, I think, damage from either the bridge moving, because my, my initial concern when we had discussed the medium was going with the, the metal panels because they're not going to fall off. Whereas you, you go to a few different shopping centers that have done these mosaic tile things, and the tiles have fallen off. And with a bridge, having a train going over it potentially moving a little bit, I thought there might be a chance of those tiles popping off. So between tiles popping off and potential for vandalism, I think that's probably my biggest concern with it, and it not being insured is a problem. I think the artwork is beautiful. In my mind, I'm almost inclined to say that on the bridge itself, due to the constraints that the, the Gold Line has, or Metro has put into place, I would almost rather it just have something simple that says historic downtown San Dimas, or welcome to historic downtown San Dimas on the bridge itself as an entry into our downtown area. And then save this artwork. I would love to see it still displayed publicly, but belonging to us, something that we can insure. And I think the covered wagon at Arrow and Benita is in, on the list of projects that we're probably going to have to tackle. And I'd love to see something like this there, displayed at the entrance to our city, something that we can ensure, something that we can maintain and have more control over. But again, just my opinion.
We, we also have to be cognizant that the funding source is Prop C funds, which would not support the project at Benita and Arrow Highway. And so they are restricted funds that have a very restricted purpose. So I know, we're trying to be transparent. We're at the point where we can install the art, and I'm recommending we say yes, knowing that something could happen later and we may have to take one off, or all the mall may come off. But I think at this point, if we leave blank spaces up on a bridge where we agreed, and they agreed to install them, I think it's not going to look that great. And so I, we install it and we just say, there you go, we've done it, and then we move on. And if somebody breaks one of them, and then we deal with Metro, at that point, it would be Metro who I think could be a little more accommodating than what the Gold Line would be in having one of our panels be destroyed and be willing to replace that panel since it's now their ownership, their bridge. And I don't think they're going to just leave it that way or remove it and make it look awkward in a community like ours. But we wanted to make sure we're transparent about it, and that the council doesn't decide to just say, well, then in that case, never mind, let's not do it.
All right, that's fair enough.
If there are no, do you need a motion? If there are no further questions or comment, or comment on the motion, obviously, then I would move that we would do alternative one, proceed with the project.
I second that.
I think my only concern is the, understanding the, what we're doing. I have a problem with the direction. As far as the artwork goes, is there a period for the public to review and comment and provide feedback that we're going to have? Or are we just moving forward with this as proposed?
There certainly can be a comment period if council would like to direct, so.
I'm going to pull a card out of John's playbook, and I always think more public comment is better. And so I would hope council would consider allowing some time for the public to provide feedback on the artwork. It's a significant investment, and I think it's something that's going to be very prominently displayed, so.
So you're talking about option two, which is temporarily postpone and allow the, and is there a defined time?
No, no, I'm not even, I'm not necessarily saying we need to postpone or anything. I'm just, in what we're going to do here, work in a comment period, move forward, but let's let people provide feedback.
If there is a comment period, would that present any complications for the installation of the art or the schedule?
Mike?
My question is, is if there is a public comment period or some sort of mechanism to get public feedback, would that complicate our ability to get the art installed on the timeline that Metro has specified in which they would do it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the artwork is due no later than October of '24. So if the council wanted to proceed, the design is mostly done, then it's just about fabricating the tiles and things like that.
We'll have to bring the artist contract back to the council to review, and at that time, there will be the, the proposals for what the artwork will be, much like you showed tonight. And so the public will be able to speak on it then, speak on whether they want to have any changes to the artwork or comment on it. So that ability for public comment will definitely occur.
Mechanically, would that become a change order then?
No, it would be for the council to approve the artist contract. It hasn't been approved yet. So that has to come to council with the proposal for what the art will be.
Okay.
And when, there's been one request from the administrative service director that we, in the action, correct that the allocation of funds should come from Prop A and not Prop C.
So do we have a substitute motion? I can't remember. No, not really. Okay, so we'll add that, that modification, that it comes from Prop A, not Prop C.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to say no, but I can't. I just wanted to move forward and get out of the business of dealing with the, the Gold Line. If I had my druthers, we'd sue them again. That's the only way we ever brought them back to, to reality, and they met with us and we, we kind of won, kind of lost. But the reality is, they keep dictating to us everything that we're doing, and we keep bending over and doing whatever they're doing. I'm going to vote yes. But no, I'm, I'm going to vote yes, because I just want to move forward, because I'm tired of dealing with them, and I'm quite sure that this conversation will be back in Metro's, Karen Bass's lap tomorrow morning. All right. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, at this point, whether anyone likes it or not, Councilman Evern says he needs a break. We're going to, we're going to take a, we're going to take a five-minute break, and hopefully we're back here in 10. We're gonna, we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a five-minute break and hopefully we're back here in 10. We'll reconvene the city council meeting. We'll move on to item number four. The discussion and direction regarding boards, commissions, and committee appointments. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, we talked about August 22nd being the date that we do the formal approval of all the nominations for the commissions with a start date of September 1st. But there are a couple of areas, we wanted to make sure we had some clarity in how we were approaching it. And it didn't make sense to wait until August 22nd to then run into some of the issues and then go, what do we do when we're trying to make an appointment for September 1st? So one, which you have in the agenda packet are all the applications that we have received up until the date of publication. And there were a couple of those applications that came in after the two-week deadline that was established by staff. And yes, that deadline was not council-designated. It was staff-designating it based on what we believe we needed timeline-wise to get the discussion on the first meeting today and the approval on the second. And so one of the directions we want to make sure we get clarity are, how do we handle applications that come in after the fact, even if they come in today or tomorrow? Are there, are there ones that we should be including and the council should be considering? So that's one clarification we want to receive. The second one would be, in terms of the nominations, council members can't share across, like, we can't share with all of you what everybody is nominating, who's nominating what. But we also want to get to the 22nd with a list of 25 nominations for the five main commissions without people being selected multiple times, leading to vacancies occurring right from the get-go. And so my recommendation would be to, once you've decided on your nominations, that individual council members will convey that to the clerk's office, who will compile the listing, so that when we get to publishing the agenda for the 22nd meeting, we will have one list of all the contemplated nominations by council member, that there would obviously be no conflicts, and that we would have done a final verification with the candidates to say, you've been nominated and you are willing to serve because you're on the agenda for the 22nd, so that it makes it an easy decision for the council to just approve and move on. And so, we wanted to get that clarity from council, just in case there's something different you want to do. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it to you.
All right. I have one question, and maybe the city clerk can give us our past history. When we had openings on whatever commission, we posted a help-wanted ad, for lack of a better word, and we gave a date when the, when the applications were open and a date when applications closed. Okay? Is that not how we did it? Or could you explain the past practices? Because there was never an extension, that I know of, that I can remember. John may be able to remember one or two, but I don't remember too many.
So, yes, whenever there were vacancies, it was publicized with a deadline when the applications needed to be turned in. The only time there were extensions is when we hadn't received enough applications. And then we had, there were times when we extended two or three times until we got a sufficient amount of applications to go ahead and start the interview process. But, extensions, again, were only done in the instance when we didn't have enough applications for the process.
I think that in at least one or two cases, if there was one opening and we only got one application, or the same number, we also extended the period so that we could get more applications. So, the other thing is that the application period was usually more than a couple of weeks. I mean, it was usually...
Usually, it, usually it's a month.
Okay, and this, this, this application period was only two weeks, three weeks?
Two and a half, two, two and a half weeks.
Thank you.
But that was because of the September, the September date for getting all of the boards and commissions up and running again.
So if, if the council so chose, they could extend that date to three, you know, a month from now or two months from now?
That, that...
If they wanted to extend the date to get them up and running from September 1st, or whatever it is?
You, you could extend the date if you would like to give time to get more applicants, but that would mean that a couple of the commissions wouldn't be able to meet because of lack of quorum.
Okay. All right, any, any further questions?
Is there anything that precludes staff from, if we were to send our nominations to the clerk, to just post it online? And then just make that public? I mean, or is that before that meeting?
I think there'd be a Brown Act issue with that because it'd be one council member communicating their nomination to the rest of the council, essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
But as you call people, though, you could, I mean, there's nothing to preclude you from saying, has somebody picked you already? Before you even, I mean, you go to call Person X and you start wanting to talk to them about the commission. You know, if they've already been selected by somebody else, then...
They can tell you that they've already been selected, and then the clerk may tell you that your nominee has already been nominated by someone else when you tell her to.
Yeah, but I...
But not who, but not who.
But I think legit...
Yeah, but it, but that's kind of erroneous because if I call you and say, hey Jeff, I'm considering nominating you, the first response from anybody's gonna be, yeah, but Ryan's already told me that he's gonna nominate.
The clerk should not tell you who nominated that person. The other person, they very well may.
But I just want to clarify, though. When council member one transmits to the city clerk their five nominations for, let's say, the five main commissions, and then two days later, council member two transmits their five, and on council member two, there is a person that was already nominated by council member one, we will be telling council member two that your third candidate was already nominated because we would now know that's the case.
But where would be the, where would be the fairness? It, because one said this, you know, we, all five might say it at the same time.
What do you mean?
You know, so I nominated somebody. Somebody, okay? And then you called, John calls you and says, hey, I'm nominating and I'm gonna nominate this guy. And then somebody says, well, he's already been nominated by somebody else, but just because he's 10 minutes late and calling after me or somebody else. So, I mean, I don't see, he's being penalized.
Well, it's not a penalty, the person's still getting nominated. It, I don't, I don't know that or see that there's an issue with you doing it versus him. The person is still getting the nomination. Then he could go on and make an alternate nomination.
And that...
Well, Jeff, could, could somebody in that scenario that he's describing, so Emmett nominates, Emmett nominates someone, and then I'm like, oh, then I call Deborah unknowing and say, oh hey, I'm gonna nominate whoever. And she says, oh, well, someone, you know, nominated this person. And if that person tells me, and I call him, hey, you got nominated, you didn't tell me. Oh, no, yeah, the mayor nominated me. Would anything preclude me then from calling the mayor to discuss that individual candidate and have that discussion on whether or not it's more prudent for he or I to make a difference?
Not, not at that point because it's only two council members involved in that conversation.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's any way to solve the first past-the-post issue. It would be the same if we just, everybody came to a meeting and we said, who do you want to nominate, Councilmember Weber? And he says who he wants to nominate. Somebody has to be first, because then the next council member we ask won't be able to nominate that same person. So I don't know if there's a way to solve that one.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think so neither.
I guess, unless we have a list of eligible nominees and we just start to remove the names once we receive them, so that public, there is a public list that we published already.
That would be fine, but it doesn't solve the first past-the-post. I mean, if one person nominates, if one council member nominates a person, the next person, the next council member to come along cannot then nominate that same person. That was the, that was the issue the mayor was raising.
Yeah, well, that's the premise of what I raised. So once Deborah has a list for one council member, if somebody else provides the same names, they would, that second council member would have to select somebody else. We wouldn't engage in a process between the two council members and trying to figure out who's gonna be taking that nomination of that same individual. So it benefits somebody who makes a decision quicker than somebody who waits to the end in terms of the nominations. But again, this is, this is why we're asking, to make sure we're doing this in a way that the council...
Yeah, there's a lot, it's possible you talk to somebody, they want to be nominated, then they change their minds, call you back and say, I can't do it. So that may even be after we've given the, those names to Deborah, then we have to take that name off. I wouldn't publish any of the names that were nominated until they're in the agenda, that particular, just, it just seems the better thing to do, in my opinion. But I guess one question I have is, in the agenda, I think you're gonna have whose nominations, whose nominees are each council members, is that right?
Yes.
Because you're gonna have to keep track of that anyway, on, on everything, okay?
And we're gonna list every commission by seat and by council. So it'll be, you know, Planning Commission, and then each council member's nominee, and then a name.
Okay, yeah.
I would just ask, in the, in the scenario that John just brought up, it's a good point that if, well, I mean, I guess it's for us. I mean, basically, if someone backs out, can staff let us know? Like, if someone was nominated by another council member and then all of a sudden they're a free agent, for whatever reason, like, they were, they were nominated for X commission, and then they're like, oh, wait, but I'd like to go to this other commission, and someone else is like, willing to appoint them. Could we be made aware of that somehow, or can be like...
Yeah, again, we're working through the process, which is why we're talking about it. So when a council member transmits their name, the clerk's office will then reach out to those individuals and verify, and validate, and verify, yes, I was nominated to the Planning Commission, yes, that's the seat I want. If any change happens from what we've confirmed, we would have to go back and let that council member know that your nominee for Planning Commission just pulled out. And it, and I think it's fine to convey that because they were nominated to another commission that was more desirable to them by another council member, but not name the council member, just that they're no longer eligible and then now you have an ability to put somebody else on the Planning Commission.
I think the clerk could, could let the whole council know that this nominee is now available again.
So how about, I guess, let me ask then, in the spirit of that, like with, like, city council, or like when we run our election, and, you know, Friday, you know, who pulled papers, whatever, could the city clerk send us, send council as a whole, you know, each Friday until this meeting or whatever? You know, here's the name of people who've been nominated. Not send us who nominated them, just send Planning this person, Equestrian this person, without telling us who nominated them.
I think that's okay.
Okay. So could we do that, like, once, maybe Wednesday and Friday? Or like, once at the end of the week?
Yes, the end of the week would be preferable.
When is the, we need to publish this for the agenda, when is the last date that we would need to send nominations in? Because I'm interviewing candidates, so I just need to know when those need to be done by.
Friday, the Friday morning before, so we publish the agenda Friday afternoon, so Friday morning.
Okay, Friday morning before, okay.
Like, I guess, and I don't, I don't want to be complicated, but I'm just thinking because of the timeline. It's like, let's say, it's Tuesday. So presumptively, by the end of this week, some, or some may already have figured out what they want to do with some of them. So if you receive those, you could send them out perhaps on Friday. And then, would it be difficult then to send something out maybe on Tuesday, after you come in? If anyone, if council had sent out, any of us had sent you anything on, over the weekend, or maybe on Monday? So then whoever's left, you know, can figure it out. And then by the end of the week, hopefully everything's together for that Friday deadline you need?
Not difficult at all.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the applications. Was it just the two that we have here that came in after the deadline?
No, those, those two would make four.
Okay, so there were four total?
Yes, those, those came in over the weekend.
How were they transmitted if this was received on Sunday? Was it, was it sent via email?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It seems to me that at least one, if not... It seems to me that at least one, if not, I was looking at the chart, Deborah, that you made and there's a RV column, is that like an RCP?
Registered voter.
A registered voter, okay. Oh, good, because we need to know that, right? Okay. I saw in the, let's sit, a bunch of applications that one person who came in late just over the weekend had filled out.
The interest form.
An interest form, and I think that maybe some people, at least that one person, might have thought that's all they had to do. Maybe they weren't, you know, aware that they had to do an application as well.
Well, they received several emails reminding them.
Okay.
And so just so that I'm clear, council could not consider the four unless there was some sort of an agreement here to allow for that?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right, why don't we take that, that portion of this up and then we'll come back to the other portion. What is the, anyone want to speak to extending?
I, uh.
Those, those dates past the Friday that was due?
I guess I have a question, and just procedurally speaking, I don't know that there's anything that would prohibit us from selecting an appointee from the community at large who didn't even put in an application. I, I don't think that there's a mechanism that would prevent us from doing that, right?
Yes, and that was part of the premise when Deborah and I talked about this, when those applications came in after the deadline, whether or not we should include them and not. My, my view was, this is a council member's nomination, so at any point in time, anytime there's a vacancy, the driver of who's selecting is you. So if you came on September 16th, which is two days before we have to publish the agenda, and you found somebody that was.
August.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. August 17th, and you found a great candidate and said, this is my nominee, yes, we would be asking them to do an application, but we would reach out to them and confirm, yes, I want to serve on planning commission for Eric Weber, and we would list them as such, get the application done and in the agenda package, so that the public sees that like everybody else, because it is your choice. That's why we wanted to clarify. We didn't want to exclude anybody because it was past the deadline that we set. We also didn't want to include more people after this point unless the council was okay with that.
I guess that would be my preference, is that, that the deadline was the deadline, whether who said it or not, I don't know that that's really material to me, but in fairness to the people that submitted it before the deadline, I mean, I think, I would prefer that that cutoff, remain the cutoff with the understanding that we can still appoint whoever it is that we want if we, if we so chose to.
In the handbook that we just adopted, it says you can put an application in any old time, and it's good till the end of the calendar year, or unless it's November or December, then it's good till the end of the following calendar year. So if a person puts an application in next week, next Thursday even, or not next Thursday, a week, a week from this coming Thursday, there's an application out there. I don't think that council members, as Chris said, should be precluded from choosing that person if they think that that person is the best person for the job. After all, it's an individual, as it was set up, as it was proposed, it's not a collective decision until it comes to the council. The nomination process is an individual, person by person decision. And so however you find out that somebody wants to be on the commission, they could have been out of town, it's summer, they could have been on vacation, they could have had some kind of family problem or who knows what, and if they didn't apply in time, I say it's okay if they do let you know and say, you know, I'm interested.
The interest form was the easier way to get that, I'm interested, so that we don't miss somebody. I think the logistics of where we need to have a cutoff for the, for the August 22nd meeting is publishing the agenda, because we, we cannot let some late application come in, then delay the publishing and potentially get within the 72-hour publication window. So I would say, anything, we will accept something all the way up until the end of day Thursday before we publish the agenda. After that, if you still want to consider that candidate, a council member does have the choice not to make a nomination for the package that goes forth on the 22nd and then submit something after. So there's no absolute hard fast deadline to actually.
So at the next council meeting, I could say, I'm going to nominate the guy in the back row, okay, and that would be fine.
It has to be in time for the agenda publication, so for that.
No, you can, you can nominate anybody you want to, even if they're not in the agenda, but we do need to have time to verify that they are a registered voter and a citizen of San Dimas.
That, that part's been done already, well, oh, if there are no, yes.
And, and also your Boarding Commission handbook specifies that the applications will be published. So if I transmit that I'm nominating somebody and there's no application, one, they haven't been verified, and then two, the application hasn't been transmitted. We can always change that in the Boarding Commission handbook, but all that means is it will be the next meeting that we'll put that name on the agenda for that individual. So you could announce it at the 22nd, it'll be the first time it's there. It just means we'll just put that on the agenda again, and whatever other names weren't approved on the 22nd, would it be approved on the September meeting? The only risk is if you don't have at least three members appointed by September 1st, you can't seat a commission and actually hold the meeting, which for most commissions may not be an issue, but for planning commission would definitely be a problem.
Okay. All right, so what did we decide throughout this conversation right now? Okay, were you going to, so we just continue to accept applications?
That's what it's, that's what it sounded like from the head nods in the discussion.
Eric's suggestion, Councilman Weber's suggestion is the one I prefer, and it allows the flexibility for council members to make decisions if they decide to opt for something outside of the applications that have come in. To me, there doesn't seem to be any modification of that unless people feel otherwise.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree. The whole premise of the, of the selection process was to allow the council members to nominate individuals based off of their thoughts. So I agree, I think the, the process, the exercise of collecting the applications to me was about getting the word out that this is what we're doing, and I think that we received a number of responses. But I, and my preference personally would be to honor and respect the cutoff, but I hear the point and it is a valid point that, and it is in fact what we, we adopted and there was the, the lasting application time period, which it is outlined, so I am supportive of that as well.
One question that I had is, I didn't do the full count, are there any commissions that do not have enough applications? Because we may want to think about a different, I don't know, publicity or something there if in fact there's not enough for a quorum or that sort of a thing.
There actually are not.
There is all of them.
There are, there's one commission that does not have enough number one choices, and that's the Equestrian Commission.
Got it, okay.
It has four, but I believe it has two other people who are willing to serve on the Equestrian Commission.
I actually do like the way we're doing it now, where you can rank several commissions that you're willing to serve on. I, I think it does generate more interest than just flying one particular commission at a time, so.
So you're, you're saying there's only three people that were interested in Equestrian?
No, there's, I believe it's six, if I count it right, who are interested in the Equestrian Commission. There's four who said it's my number one choice, and then there's two others who were second or sixth or whatever it was, but they at least were interested.
I guess my understanding then, based off of what we're all discussing here, is that it really, in the end, doesn't matter if an applicant's rank preference was whatever, if during your discussions with them, they, you know, said, hey, you know, I might, you know, I'm out of chips to nominate you to X commission, but I have, you know, I could nominate you to this commission, are you willing to serve even though you didn't put that as a preference? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think, yes. I think I, I would be okay with that. The whole goal of having three commissions listed was just to make sure you had options.
Okay.
If it's a fourth one they didn't list. I think what I'm hearing, we'll accept applications all the way up until a publication cutoff, and then from those, the names, you will, those will be the ones will be considered for the 22nd. If anything after that cutoff period or are brought up during the meeting of the 22nd, we will just consider those at the following meeting to fill those holes that we didn't fill on the 22nd. Okay, so that's good direction on that one. And then in terms of the nominations, my recommendation is transmitting those nominations to the clerk, once you have your nominations, and then we'll keep you advised of eligible candidates and yours if they should change, or others, if there are conflicts, to make sure that any available candidate that could be nominated is there that you know and you're aware of, so that we can solidify 25 in the main commissions and then the secondary commissions through the appointment, the recommendation of the mayor.
There was one question that was, we talked about, was never answered, and we might be talking about it more in the future, but what do we tell a candidate their term is? Like, I think we talked about a zero type of term, but for, so say in, in the case of Eric and me, we're, you know, we're on the cycle where we have an election coming up in 2024. If one of us was not reelected or didn't run or whatever, then there'd be somebody new on the council. So the nom, the person who's on there is my nomination and then appointed person, what happens to that person a year from now?
On the direction that was given, that was brought up about a term zero, but it wasn't what the council decided to move forward with, so as of right now, all terms will start September 1st, and they will, it will end to, their first term will end two years from that point, so the end of August 2025, and then the second term if they're all nominated. So we will have to grapple with, how do we stagger the nomination?
No problem, we, we have to grapple with that, but at this point, it is a two-year term, it would actually go two years to, from today, so even if one, the appointing council member is no longer on the council for a year and a half, that person would still, at this point, without figuring it out, it has a two-year term.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think, just to clarify, if a new council member is elected and those, and they want to make a change to those, to that term, they could propose removing one and replacing it with another and with the processes articulated in the.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this and we were, the term zero concept was to get us going now to the election, and then basically they would reappoint starting their two-year term then, right?
That made sense, that made sense, but it wasn't, the council didn't accept that and a number of other items that were raised during the meeting.
So we've got to go back and revisit that, but I think we have time to do that.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're at that, let's get the commission started and then let's fix the holes that we have and improve the process. So those are the two items, and then the last item is, are you okay with formally agendizing the August 22nd meeting as the appointment meeting, where we'll publish the, the list of nominees and we'll publish the applications we have, and then you can take a formal action then? I don't see an opposition to that.
Okay.
That, that's all the direction we need.
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one last thing, is it, don't kill me Deborah, is it possible to get a list of, and I don't know if it's for all of these folks or not, but is it possible to get, to find out who has previously served and who has not? Because I noticed in just looking at the packet over the weekend, there's some people that are currently on commissions that are in fact finishing like a second two-year term, and then I know there's other people that have served in the past, and then I know there's a couple of people that I think are just 100% never been appointed to anything before.
Yes, using the, using the spreadsheet that we have now, I can identify them with color coordinate or something and to identify who is currently on a commission and/or who has served in the past.
Okay, is it possible to, is it possible to know when their, when their previous terms were or what their previous term was? If they were, like, if they were appointed, you know, six years ago?
It is possible, it's been so long since those terms were done and over.
Okay, I can ask.
It will take some, some research, but it can be done.
It's okay, if you, if we can just, who's, who's served in the past, who's currently serving, and then, you know, I'll ask them specifically about it. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right. You're absolutely sure, we only spent 30 minutes on this. Oral communications, members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or, or as may be determined by the chair. Anyone wishing to speak to the, to the council at this time? Oh, come on, we got lots, like another hour or so here.
You're missing your crowd.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, we'll move on to city reports. City manager.
Just one Gold Line update, westbound Gladstone, just east of Lone Hill, is due to be closed to a traffic signal installation at the crossing this Saturday, August 12th. I don't have the times, but I believe it's going to be most of the day, but we'll be publishing that on our social media, so folks will be aware of that. And that's all, Mr.
Thank you. Did you have a good vacation?
I did, thank you.
Welcome back home. Okay? Jeff?
I have no reports, Mayor. I have no reports, Mayor.
All right, okay. Members of the city council, council members report on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency. Seeing none. Eric, McConnell?
Just two things, Mr. Mayor, I want to express my gratitude to the staff and the sheriff's department for putting on two events very close together, one being National Night Out, the other being the city birthday party. They had marvelous attendance, it was good seeing, I think pretty much everybody in the audience I saw at the, at one or both events, so it was good seeing you at both. And so I, I just wanted to compliment the team here, Team San Dimas, for doing an outstanding job, even in hot weather. It was very, very fun and well-attended, and everybody enjoyed themselves. I also want to pay tribute to my colleagues for being involved, it was good seeing all of you and singing happy birthday together. Maybe we should think about an acapella group or something in the future. I understand Ryan, you used to serve in choir or something, right? So that might be something, that might be something worth considering, but that's all I have to say, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
There may be pictures of this choir days.
I don't know that that was supposed to be public, but thanks for putting that on the minutes, yeah.
I think you did, you did say that several years ago, you said that you used to.
Well, I, I just wanted to touch on the city's birthday, I think everybody on the council was there, it was a fantastic time, we had a lot of our state and federal representatives that were there in attendance as well. It was a good turnout, it was really hot, and I think we made the best out of it though, it was a really good time. Thanks for the city staff work on that, as well as National Night Out, even though, just to mention that I wasn't at National Night Out because I was at National Night Out for my day job, and that one pays the bills, so that's, that's where I was at for that one. I definitely had San Dimas in, in my thoughts while I was baking down in Orange County instead of here. That's it.
John?
Well, yeah, the birthday celebration was great, singing was good. I got some compliments actually from people on our, on our happy birthday song, but I left at some point, but did get an update from the mayor, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock, I don't know what it was, and he said, there's still tons of people here, everybody's dancing, everybody's having fun. So that was, that was, that was really great. The only other thing I was going to mention, oh, just, just of interest, this is very brief, got an email today from Jeffrey Prang, he's the assessor of the county of Los Angeles, and it's, it has always, I always like to be reminded of this, these stats on how many homes and apartments and stuff like that we have. So just for everybody's interest, we've got, it says, we've got 9,511 single-family homes, 203 apartment complexes, and 1,389 commercial and industrial parcels. Our net value for our tax rolls is $6.84 billion, which is pretty good, and that's a 5% increase over the prior year. So that's San Dimas's property health report, and that's really all I've got tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Singer?
I thought you never were going to ask. I thought you never were going to ask. One is, I'd like to talk about salamanders. We have salamanders in the San Dimas Creek, and that might be something that we should talk about in the future.
Second?
But I will note in all seriousness, the San Dimas Creek, when I was a kid, you would see those salamanders and in the, yeah, in the experimental forest, yeah, it was really cool. Yeah, it's awesome. Anyways, two things, National Night Out. Thank you to everybody that helped put that on. It was an awesome event. I heard about it, unfortunately, or not unfortunately, but I was at my day job as well as Eric was, putting together our National Night Out there. But nevertheless, I was with everyone here in spirit, and I appreciate all the volunteers, the Sheriff's Department, fire, everyone else that participated. Really good event. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to hear our acting Captain Sacks talk about some pretty interesting work the station's doing at my day job. And, you know, I think there's a lot of things that the deputies here do and the station do that, you know, really, we don't see all the time, it doesn't make the headlines, but they're doing some fantastic work. So thank you to everybody for all the work that's being done there. And, you know, to everyone that came out to National Night Out from the public, that's what that night's about, is community partnership for public safety. And so I really do appreciate everyone in the community that's always been very supportive of our law enforcement. Also, the city birthday, happy birthday, San Dimas. Everything, I think, went very well with that. It was great to see representatives. Congresswoman Napolitano was here, as well as Senator Susan Rubio and Assemblymember Chris Holden, and then Supervisor Catherine Varger, and the whole council. So it was a really great event. You know, the chamber, everyone did a fantastic job. Thank you, the city staff, for putting that together as well, and all of our volunteers. Every year, when that comes together, it's just interesting to see how many people come out and really do take time to actually celebrate that event. So I don't know when our next time capsule thing is, but I happen to be around for one of them, which was really interesting. And I hope, you know, in the future, when we do that again, I don't know if I'll be around or not, but nevertheless, that fact that we do that, I think, is just huge because you don't realize how far the city's come, and even for such a young city, you know, we have come a long ways, you know? And I think the artwork tonight, the artists presented, I think, showed some of the history before, you know, we were a city. And I think that's really important for everyone to see and understand. And I hope, and I really do sincerely hope, people do come out when staff puts the artwork on display. I think it's very important for people to come out, and I, you know, although it wasn't in the discussion, just speaking for myself, it would be really cool to have, you know, a little narrative, perhaps accompany the artwork that just explains what it's about because I think that's important. I don't know if the historical, because society could be consulted on some of that, too, that might be helpful to provide some context and even some, even a way to redirect people maybe to the Historical Society for more information. So with that said, thank you so much for everyone, for all your hard work. And also, last thing, I do appreciate the staff and Mr. Olander pointing out the seniors event regarding public safety. You know, the seniors in the community, you know, are a large percentage of the population. And I think it's important that we continue to prioritize those needs. And I do appreciate the staff doing what they need to do to keep our cooling centers and all those other things open when they need to be open. And the last thing is, I wanted to give a shout out to Scott Wasserman. Recently, I had referred someone to him regarding a Girl Scouts project, and, you know, I just, staff has always been so accommodating to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, or any civics organization, or even student interns. And so with that, I just wanted to give a plug to, I haven't heard that we've received a whole bunch of youth commissioner applications, but I was reminded not too long ago when the Locken Yada city manager retired, Mark Alexander, who started his career here at the city of San Dimas. He was on a youth commission that the city of San Dimas had at that time. And he talks about it quite frequently, actually. He came to National Night Out where I was at that particular night. But he's a San Dimas resident, and, you know, I'd really like to see that we fill the youth commissioner spots on all of these commissions. And so I would hope staff would reach out with school getting back into session to see if we can get Mr. Millbrant and perhaps the others from the respective schools to get people here. And I'd really like to see some youth from McKinley get involved as well, if they're so interested. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Well, I think I can, I'll repeat something from each person so we can get another hour here. So instead of repeating what was said, I think we had three great showings for the city of San Dimas. The National Night Out, obviously, was a big success. The next evening, Wednesday evening, was the Music in the Park, which was unbelievable. There was so many people, it was full. It was completely full. I kind of judged it by watching the, kind of watching the guy making the chicken kebabs, and he just kept putting kebabs and kebabs and kebabs and kebabs. And I asked him on, at the birthday barbecue, I said, wait, what was more kebabs did you do, you know, either the birthday celebration and/or the music in the park? And he said, way more at the park. He says, it was unbelievable. And he says, I'm sorry that, you know, we're be doing the last one very soon for that, but it was tremendous. The birthday barbecue, I want to thank the staff, they did a great job, along with the chamber and then everybody else that were involved in it. I mean, there are people still out there asking when the barbecue's going to come back, you know, okay? And I think enough people have heard that from me recently, that at least there could be a discussion somewhere down line. But I think that we're so fortunate that we had three events back-to-back-to-back-to-back, and every one of the three were a huge success. And I think that the staff and the community recognizes that the staff has to work extremely hard because the same deputies were at every event, the same city employees were at every event. You know, so those are the things that are happening. We've talked enough about the commissions, and I appreciate everybody who's applied, anybody who's planning on jumping into that program that we're in the process of doing. I'm not sure exactly how this is going to work. I think we've, I'll say it again, and I know I'm going to get chewed out by at least a half dozen people, or at least five up here, four here, is I think we created a problem that we didn't have a real problem. We could have worked it out, and now we got a lot of people wondering what their role here in San Dimas is going to be. So we'll continue to work at that. But I'm sure that, at the end of the day, every one of the commissions will be fully staffed and will have nothing but quality people. And that doesn't mean anything that, if you're not selected, keep applying. I think every time anyone's ever asked me, and there are people up here at this table that has ever asked me about becoming involved in city government, I've said, get on a commission, take that time, spend that time, show people that you're interested in becoming involved. So the reality is, all of these people that I'm looking at in these applications are doing exactly what we as a community would want, people wanting to become involved in their day-to-day operations of our government. Because the commissions are very, very beneficial, just like the volunteers. If we don't have volunteers in this community, we're financially bankrupt because we have to have them helping us doing all these events. So thank you very much. At this point, I'm proud and very happy to say we do not have a closed session, a study session, or any other kind of session. Okay? Now I got the city manager waving and says, no, I got to talk to you more.
There is an item under this item we're on now, consideration of forming a city council ad hoc committee to discuss the number of members for boards, commissions, and committees that was requested by the council at the last meeting.
Yes, I requested that, so thank you for putting that on there. I completely forgot to bring that up when we were talking about that other thing. I just would see if, in light of the council's previous direction to cancel the Saturday study session, if there would be interest. I think Councilmember Nakano has suggested a subcommittee.
Did that last meeting?
No, procedurally, we're, we canceled the, we canceled the Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in the spirit of Councilmember Nakano's suggestion, I think the subcommittee members was Mayor and Councilmember Ebner. So I would, I would see if anyone else was interested in establishing that subcommittee so they can have a discussion to see if they can come to a consensus on a path for increasing the number of council or commissioner, board and committee members from five to seven. And if they cannot come to a consensus, then no further actions taken.
Any further discussion?
Are you guys willing to?
It only takes two people to...
Well, you guys want to, I mean, we could, we could put the hurt on someone else, I don't know.
I was thinking about you and John.
Yeah, we could do that, too. Okay, all right. Sounds good?
You want to do it?
Sure.
Okay, John and I'll do it.
Okay. All right.
So John and I will do the ad hoc committee, okay, with a report to come somewhere in the next 90 days.
If you come to a consensus.
Correct.
Well, it could be, the report will come in the next 90 days, one way or the other.
If you don't, that's cool.
We'll come to a consensus, and the consensus may be just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
And the consensus may be something else, but, okay.
So any further? You got anything additional you want to add there since you've been gone for a while?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's good to be back.
Good to have you back. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Good night, see you in two weeks. And I would imagine that the, the chamber will be full with a lot of interested people.